The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome everybody to this special meeting in the Town Council. We'll call immediate order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance if we could. Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible). And to be followed for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Councilor Campagnelli.
Here.
Councilor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Wieschowski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Massa.
Here.
Councilor Rochette.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Okay, next item up is our Audience of Citizens. If anyone wishes to speak, now would be the time. Do I see anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Yes, sir? When you come up, you have to state your name and address, please. I think you've been here before, frequent flyer, so I'm sure you know how to do it.
First time.
Okay.
Forty-year taxpayer in this town.
There you go.
I'm going to request that we do not give the Board of Education any increase.
All right.
Because we do have a lot of senior citizens in this town. And they haven't basically got any increases in at least three years that I could find. And if they did, it was minimal. In 2015, they got 1.7% increase. In 2016, they had zero increase. In 2007, they received a .0 increase. Our senior citizens are like our forgotten seniors in this town. They're cash strapped, they can't afford the taxes. And I don't want to hear from a certain group of people that can't afford it, they should move out of Berlin. That's pretty sad to hear that coming from people. They're the ones that built this town. They paid basically year after year in taxes. Board of Education never complained. But when they're basically only getting a zero or a .3% increase, I believe that they should have their taxes frozen on their house. The Board of Education, my feelings on the Board of Education after 40 years of paying taxes, whatever you give them, they like spoil little kids. They jump up and down, come back for more money. If you give them one million, they're going to want two. You give them two, they're going to want three. The scare tactics that they basically have, especially in November when I seen SOS save our schools, well, I interpreted that, and it's not a bad sign, I was thinking. Same old scare tactic. So I'm going to recommend a zero increase to the Board of Education. Basically, not receiving $4.9 million from the state, we don't know what other increases that the state's going to pull back on the Town of Berlin. So Berlin's going to live within their checkbook like we all have to do running our homes. So again, I say no increase. They've got enough when we have vice principals assisting other vice principals in the same school system. They should look, I think the Board of Education is very top-heavy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
Samuel Maglio, 78 Rocky Hill. Well, you know, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after last week's council meeting, I was embarrassed. It was an embarrassment to see the constant arguing, shouting, and big gring over a budget that you guys discussed in the past, and each one of you voted for that budget. Charlie, he voted no, and I respect him for that. A budget was put out to the townspeople, and they did their job. They went out and voted. Now, it's your responsibility to enact it. Democrats accuse Republicans of not having a plan. I disagree. I think the Republicans had a plan. They had a plan to pass this budget. The Democrats may have disagreed with the plan, but you should have taken a vote without arguing about it. You know, the problem with the Democrats, the way I look at it, is that they cater to a very special interest group. They cater to the education lobby. And not one Democrat, since I've lived in this town for 35 years, has, none of them have ever complained on the outrageous administrative salaries. When a superintendent makes, gets an increase of $10,000 a year, I don't hear anybody complaining about it. And I don't know anybody in any kind of private industry unless you're a big CEO for a major investment group that would get $10,000 a year increases. Not one Democrat has ever explained to me, or anybody in town, as why an assistant principal makes more money than a chief of police who incidentally is on call for 24 hours a day and protects her schools in our town. Democrats seem to forget about the senior citizens who are living on a fixed income, or families that don't have any children in public schools, or incidentally support the education. We all want a fair break. Republicans funded this budget. And I know there's certain Democrats and there's certain Board of Ed members that didn't like the fact that the Republicans gave the Board of Education a million dollars after they heard. The superintendent incidentally said he was happy with that million dollars. President of Board of Education said we had to work, we could work with that. A councilman, Mr. Councilman Russell, said it was the best Democratic budget we've had in a long time. Superintendent of Schools said that this was the largest increase that he had in years. So you know what, to say that the Republicans are anti-education will prove that we're not anti-education. And the Democrats and certain members of the Board of Education also are upset that the Republicans worked with the President of Board of Education, worked with the superintendent of schools, which took it off the table that they couldn't cut sports, which would have been a, one of their political outcry's that the Republicans always cut Board of Education. We do with our programs. So Republicans, we try to represent everybody in town and not just an interest group. I encourage each councilman to vote tonight to pass the budget. No further increase of Board of Education. Each one of you members have been given the honor to represent the town. Be responsible, do your job, rather than bricking with each other. Stop worrying about next year's election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Stuart Topoloff, 29 Elwood Road. All right. I don't come to these things very often because I have to deal with it at work. All right? But I listen to the seniors at work all the time. I'm on a fixed income. So am I. And anybody else that's salaried or whatever is too. I'm sure Kate Wall is. I'm sure our town manager is. But what you don't hear is about the tax relief they receive. Don't tell me they don't, because I administer the tax program in the Town of Rocky Hill. The Town Council can pass a local ordinance freezing the elderly's taxes at their current rate. It's in the law. All these seven people, all four of these people have to get together, write the ordinance, and pass it. It's all they have to do, and that'll protect your seniors. Okay? So gloom and doom with the seniors. I feel bad for them. But years ago, when we went down this path, they were where I am. Okay? They were where I am, making the rules. So now we're here, and now they're complaining about the budget. I'm not here to talk about the Board of Ed budget, but I'm here to talk about the Town Budget. Our Town Budget is woefully underfunded. And it's not just this year. It's not last year. It's like 12, 13, 14 years at least. Drive around town, look at the roads. We're bonding for roads. That's not good for the town. It's not good for our finances. Bonding for something that's going to fall apart. All right? This is what we do here, unfortunately. All right? Not once did I ever hear anybody up here say, "What can we do to improve the services of our town for the same amount of money that we spend?" I get asked that question every year, and I have to be creative sometimes. And we do a really good job doing that. But I don't see the creativity here. But it gets stifled. I know we have really good staff. I know we do. But where's the, where does it get stifled? Right here. I have to be creative at work, but when I get creative, I get supported. Now, I'll find out tomorrow night when I sit here and deal with my budget at work. But for the most part, I get supported. And the taxpayers don't realize how good they have it in Rocky Hill as compared to here with the services they have. We spent, how much we spent for storm cleanup with, was it Storm Alfred or whatever, that winter storm? It was like three-quarters of a million dollars. Why? Because we had to hire somebody to do it. Why did we have to hire somebody to do it? When we have a public works department, they didn't have the equipment. I'm sorry. We have the equipment in Rocky Hill because the council and the workers there say, "Hey, if these things happen, this is what we need." But to prepare for those storms that are out there cleaning up the town all the time with this equipment, why can't we do those things? We wouldn't be arguing about a budget if you drove down the road and you didn't hit 50,000 potholes and, you know, all these things. But every year, we have the same argument. "Oh, the voters voted down the budget." They're going to vote it down every year. And then we come up here and say, "Oh, I'm not going to go against the voters." Really? What's the percentage of the voters that actually voted? You know, I don't know the right answer. But I know that the town side is woefully underfunded. And I cannot agree with any further cut to the town side. I just can't. I know the tools that I have at work, and I know what they cost, and it's minimal. But having those tools here would make our staff so much more efficient. They just would. And I don't understand why it doesn't get supported at this level. Is it not being asked for? Is it getting cut beforehand? I don't know. But when I can do my job, sitting at my desk, I increase my productivity. I come here, I'm on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I use the assets that I'm afforded by the Town of Rocky Hill to do my, to hear the appeals here at town. Why? Well, I'm fortunate enough to have access to it, but my assessor should have that, those tools. My engineering department should have that tool. The fire department, the police department should have that same tool, because we all use it. But we don't have it here, because either the staff is short-sighted, which I have a hard time believing, or it doesn't get funded at this level. It's a minimal expense, what we're talking about. There's nothing on your, either increasing the budget or cutting the budget on the town side, that's, is it really going to affect the mill rate? Is it? Is it really going to protect the seniors? No. Because whatever they're going to do in Hartford is really going to affect us. That's where the, and there's no, we're going to eat it no matter what. Whatever they decide to do, we're going to get screwed here. So we're arguing over peanuts when the real issue's sitting up there at the Capitol. And every unfunded mandate they pass, it just gets passed down here. If the state would just fund pilot at 100%, like they're supposed to, we wouldn't be here today. You know? So most of this argument that we're having here today isn't sitting with you seven people, even though we're arguing over a little bit. It's with our state rep, state senator, and our governor. That's where it's at. Unfortunately, every time they cut there, they pass a lot that says it has to be funded here. They'll say they fund it for a little while, then they take the money away. And all of a sudden, who has to eat it? We do. And then the taxpayers, the one, me, like everybody else, has to, you know, pay the burden. You know, what I don't like to see is, I can't use the pools anymore. You know why I can't use the pools anymore? They don't stay open late enough. I get home from work, they're closing. Why have them? Are they a very important part of this community? Yes. But I can't use them anymore, because you guys decided a couple of years ago to cut, to close them early. Earlier in the summer and earlier at night. So when I get home from work, I can't use the pool, so why have it? You know? When you cut the services, it really, you're not seeing how it really affects us. And it affects me. And I live three-quarters of a mile from the pool, and I can't get home in time to go down the street. So you're going to do whatever you're going to do. You know? I just don't want to see the town side get cut more, because it's just going to be that much longer before my road gets fixed. It just is. And it's awful. And, you know, there's so much, the town is way underfunded. I think I'll speak on behalf of the Board of Ed. But the one plug I'll give for the Board of Ed is, the band needs new uniforms, because we're getting a lot more students. The band, the band, it's all about the band. And we need a bigger truck and more tubas. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening. And hopefully I don't ever have to come back.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we close, the Audience of Citizens. Seeing no one else, I appreciate everyone's comments. We obviously heard some diverse comments. We appreciate hearing them all, so we'll close that portion, and we'll move on to our meeting agenda. New business is to adopt our budget. You know, I've heard, we've heard from a lot of people in town, obviously we've heard tonight, and two completely different opinions on different issues, the town, the Board of Ed, all very important. We try and take everybody's viewpoint to heart. I know all of us do up here. It's very difficult, you know, recognizing that we all live in town, we all are affected by whatever cuts or whatever additions we make to whatever budget we pass. So, you know, we all feel the repercussions of that, because we're all taxpayers in the town. So I think we all do proceed as cautiously as possible. It's been a very long process. We've done a lot, a lot of work here, and I think we've come out with a fairly good budget up to this point. So what I'd like to do is put a motion on the table, and then we could have some discussion. We had a figure last time of some cuts to the town side, but I don't consider it cuts. There's two people that will be leaving town employment, basically retiring. So I'd like to propose that again, that those be figured into our budget amount. So if I take a motion on that, and we'll see what the mill rate and the budget.
Okay, we'll make a motion, adopt the fiscal year 2017, 2018 Town and Board of Education budget in the amount of $85,231,577, and set the mill rate at 31.61.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second on that?
Second.
Discussion.
I just have a question on that number. Does that include increasing Board of Ed by 50,000?
No.
So it's just cutting from the town?
Correct.
Okay. I have a question. That mill rate change, and this is a question to Kevin. What does that represent for someone who has a, let's say, $250,000 home? From the proposed budget that went to referendum to what was just proposed tonight?
It is a $12 difference. The original budget was $100.
Per year? $12 per year.
Yeah. The original budget was an increase of $152. This would represent an increase of $140 per year.
Okay. So I'm just going to make a comment. I think I expressed myself pretty well the other night. I find that it is unfortunate that we, as a council, are going to eliminate two positions. One, we don't know when those people are retiring, correct? So we don't know if it will be prior to the beginning of the fiscal year or the end of the calendar year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we are also told, both of those positions are union positions, correct?
Correct.
So we also know that it's not going to be a one-for-one, because there's going to be additional responsibilities. We were told by our labor attorney that there's going to be some stipulations asked for by the union, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't actually know what that figure is going to be, if it's going to be 150 or at all. And we don't know when those people are retiring, so we have to take that into account if it's six months into the fiscal year. And I find it unfortunate that we are going to jeopardize and take away, eliminate two roles within the town government, that we all know once you take something away, it's not going to be replaced at any time soon. I was not given a confident answer that these two positions would have been removed had this not been asked of both the town manager and the finance director to find money to cut. And we're doing it at the cost, a minimal to no impact to the taxpayers. A $12 difference. I know we're going to hear from others that any impact is an impact, but for $12 a year, we are jeopardizing the health of our town government. And as expressed by someone tonight, we're already underfunded. And, you know, they, they, I use the ubiquitous "they," that was used at the last meeting. So I'll say those who have been opposed to increases in taxes at any regards have always said that, you know, we want to listen to the people. And they split that question on purpose. Councilor Evans split that question so that we would have a better understanding of how the people were voting. It's unfortunate that when the response comes back to be one that they don't like, or maybe don't, it doesn't fit into their strategy, they choose to manipulate the numbers and try to give an example of, oh, well, we need to combine those numbers and show that overall there was more two highs than two lows. That's not what splitting those questions indicate. And however you spin it, isn't going to indicate it that way. So I am not necessarily for giving more money to the Board of Education. I'm fine with not. But I am absolutely against cutting the town government. And so for those reasons, I will be voting no for this proposal.
Okay. Yes?
I wanted to just double, it was 150,000, you said?
Correct.
From the town side?
That's right.
Okay. And that was $12 annually?
Yes.
So if we were to add the 50,000 back in for the Board of Ed, it would be $4 annually?
Whatever, whatever the percentage is.
$4.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to throw that out there.
And we don't even know that it's $150,000. So I think that that is an arbitrary number again, that we don't know, because we don't know when they're retiring, and we don't know what's going to happen with the union. And I know you want to say it is, but based on the information that was given to us by those who work in those departments, we don't know that it will be $150,000 in savings.
And I'm also concerned that we're damaging the trust of the voters and the citizens of this town over $4. That seems crazy to me. I'm not at all comfortable with that.
Damaging the trust, I guess, with the town side, I don't understand that, because if you looked at the question, I guess, people voted that the Town Budget was too high, so I'm not sure.
I wasn't talking about the Town Budget. I was talking about the Board of Ed.
And I just want to say.
Well, and I'll get, I'll get to that, but yes, go ahead.
On the Town Budget, because Mr. Evans at the last council meeting talked about people he had talked to, and they suggested that maybe. I had an opportunity to speak with some people this weekend, and they suggested that those who voted, who put too low for the Board of Ed, thought they then had to put too high for the Town Budget. And if you look at the two numbers, that too low on the Board of Ed side is nearly identical to the too high on the town side. So that could be, but we don't know that. That is all speculative. What Mr. Evans said last week was speculative. We don't know who "they" is. Is it one person? Is it, we don't know. So we have to go by the numbers that are there.
I agree, it's all very speculative. That's very true. And it's a relatively small number of people, although their votes do count.
Of course.
So, you know, we heard from both sides tonight, both very good arguments. We're up here, we try to do the best we can with what we have heard and the knowledge that we have. I think we've tried to be pretty reasonable with everything, and, you know, despite what Council Rochette might have said, these two positions, this is a plan that the town manager and the budget director have been looking at for a while. It just so happens that these two people, you know, the time has come, but this is something that we have to look at, because we're going to have to, going forward, provide the same town services and be a little bit more creative with our budgets going forward, because we know there are going to be some difficult budget years coming from the state. We already know that. And, you know, in answer to Mr. Topoloff, who has left, we have a plan to pave the roads. We're paving the roads. In fact, we have a 10-year plan now for our capital improvement budget. So we're trying to look ahead and plan and not cut any town services and do more with less. Unfortunately, that's the environment we're living in. And I couldn't agree more, that the fear is what will happen to the state of Connecticut, and we're all going to pay, somewhere or the other. It's going to get kicked down to all of us here in Berlin and West Hartford and every other town in the state. So we have to do the best that we can, and I think we have. But I see no reason why, if these positions can be consolidated, why we wouldn't do that? The Board of Ed is doing that with positions. They've had to do that with their budget. We're going to have to do that going forward to keep our school system running and to keep our town running. And we're going to have to do more with less, because we know what's going to happen with the state. We've got billions and billions of dollars shortfall in the next two to three years. So, you know, in light of it, I think this is a prudent move. It's not a move that we decided necessarily on after the vote, but these are already decisions that we were thinking about, looking at consolidating these positions. And if these people leave, you know, these are numbers that we came up with, depending upon when they leave. One is actually half a year, so that is figured into the budget when the person may be retiring. They may be retiring before that, from what I heard the other night. So we are being very thoughtful. We're trying to do the best thing. I don't think we're cutting anybody's town services. I know we're not. In fact, we added to some departments in this last budget. We added to town services. We didn't cut, we added where it was critical to do so. So I don't see the other side of the argument. I see that we're doing the best we can. I think we put together a very fair budget. I think it's important that we keep the taxes low, because I think we're all going to get a tax increase on the state level. So if we can control our Town Budget a little bit and keep our taxes a little bit low in Berlin to ease the pain of our residents that we're going to be facing from Hartford, I think that's important to do so. I don't know why we wouldn't.
So.
Yes?
Just a question about that. What are we going to do when that comes down? Because right now, if we take, so it's 150, so if we took, say, half of that, it'd be 75. Add the 50 in for the Board of Ed, it's still a 25,000 cut, and then there's 75 cushion. So why wouldn't we do that instead of what you're proposing? It seems a little nuts to me to not leave that there so that we don't have, I mean, you were talking an additional assessment from, you know, what could end up happening from the state. Like, why would we not leave a little there to have some wiggle room?
There still is some wiggle room.
Where?
I think in our, in our fund balance that we have appropriated, we're not sure we're going to spend all that. We typically, most years, do not spend all that. And again, we don't know the figure that's coming from the state. That's true. We don't know.
So why don't we take from the fund balance then, instead of the positions?
The positions are going anyway. They're going anyway. They're going to go anyway. What's the difference? It doesn't make any sense to me to not figure them in the budget.
I mean, do we have letters in our hands?
Well, from one, we do, I guess, right? We heard it the other night.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We'll do one.
Well, we don't really have a letter. Well, he's got a letter in his hand, I guess, but we do have that.
But that doesn't mean the positions are gone. That means the person who is currently in that position is gone.
No, but the plan is to consolidate positions. That's the plan.
So can I ask a question of the finance director?
Sure.
Who is in charge of the tax office? So with the elimination of the assistant tax collector, when there is only one person in the tax office, because the other people are part-time, one person is lent out to another department, that person cannot leave that tax office, right? Because there is money there. So that person is basically, if someone's on vacation, they are there unless they can get someone from Town Hall to come and relieve them to use the facilities or to go to lunch. Because there is, there's money there, so that person is basically, if someone's on vacation, they are there unless they can get someone from Town Hall to come and relieve them to use the facilities or to go to lunch, right? So we're down to one person in that tax office.
In those circumstances, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's not till later this year? And then it is figured in the budget, correct? That's later, half, half a year is figured into the budget?
Uh, it will be if, if this passes.
Right, okay.
Say something, Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna go back to the, the beginning of this whole process. I mentioned it last week. Kevin Delaney had a nice chart for us, and I don't think everybody saw it, that if we do nothing, and it's not, and don't start thinking out of the box, in ten years, we're gonna have a hundred-million-dollar budget. Now, in a state that is, relies on, you know, property tax. We don't have property tax relief. We don't have arbitration reform. You know, and this town is not gonna grow to support that. We, we have to do something now. You know, and, and as far as moving into the future about jobs and positions, I think we have an obligation to find the best way economically to provide a service. People have been talking about years of public-private partnerships. There might be things that, in our budget, now that as people retire, attrition happens, they may be subbed out. I mean, we have to look at those things. We have an obligation to look at those things. And, and I think some of that thought process is starting to happen. And I'm gonna support the budget as we just, uh, put in front of us tonight.
I'd just like to point out, too, that I suggested many months ago that we, we go to this lean seminar that was put on by CCM and go through the lean process. Not one other person on this council showed any interest in doing any of that with me. And I've been doing it, and I mentioned it at the next meeting, and Dave did say he was interested, but then nothing came of it. Since I'm not in a, a leadership role, I can't force any of this to happen, but if, if you guys would like to partner, I'd be happy to do that going forward, because that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because that, I think, is being creative, and it's not, we're not cutting positions, that, that's not the purpose of lean. The purpose of lean is to make our government run more efficiently and more cost-effectively to serve a better product to our consumers, which is our, all of our citizens and our taxpayers. So I'm still on board for that, and I'm still interested in doing that.
I'm just right there with you. Just saying, that has to do with timing, and when they have these things, you can't make all these things all the time. Comes down to their calendar, they don't offer them all the time.
Mind if I, I, I remember that you talking about that, I thought it was somewhere in the budget season, but I don't know. You know, we had a lot of meetings in the last few months, so it's difficult to make all that. I mean, I, I pretty much spend as much time as anyone on this council, probably much more so with, with meetings and things, so it's difficult. But, you know, I mean, we can look, look to that for the future, that's, that's no problem, but I think that's, that's part, it's a priority, but that's, that's what we're talking about tonight here, but, but we're, we're talking about being creative and being lean. But on the other side, you say we shouldn't be, so I, I'm confused by that, but I, I'm all for it if they can give us some suggestions, but I think that's what we're suggesting here, is that we are lean, and if we have positions that we can consolidate, we do that, because that's how you get lean. That's how we got lean in the federal government when I worked there for thirty years, and that's why we would have to do it in the town government. That's what we would do.
That's, I think you're confusing the lean process with the word lean.
No, I understand, it, it stands for something, yeah, I, I get that, but, but I mean, obviously, we always can learn, and I've been to several seminars as well, talking about things like that, and we'll, we'll all continue to learn. Uh, as far as the Board of Ed, I just wanna say that the Board of Ed, I think we've given them some great funding this year. I know, Matt, you, you had left the other night, and I quoted you. I'm sorry you're here, you can hear the quote, but that, this is one of the biggest increases we've given to the Board of Ed in several years, and, and there was a good reason for that. You know, I think that was important that we did that this year after our meeting. I think we, uh, we got a lot of insight on your budget between yourself and superintendent and Mr. Kugno, and I thought that was great. It was great discussion, and, and we, uh, I think I did, at least I can only speak for myself, Dave can speak for himself, but I learned a lot, and, and I think it was important we did that for you this year. And I think that's a pretty good figure for you, so that's why I don't see an additional increase. And I, I think from what we talked about, it's fair, and I think that the students and the town will be, uh, you know, will be, um, well-served by the budget. So, you know, I know we have a difference of opinion, I, I don't, I think we're so close. It is very close. It's a matter of, I understand a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I get it. But I think, uh, I think it's the principle of the thing. I think it's a way to go forward and, 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 and see if we can have a little bit leaner town. If jobs can get done, if we combine positions, I, I don't see why that would be a problem. And I don't see why we wouldn't figure that into the budget going forward. That's my opinion. Anybody else? Before we take a vote?
I just wanna say one thing, and that is that when you, when you guys put that money back in for the Board of Education, I applauded. And I, and I think that was the right thing to do. And, and I think you guys did a great job with that, and that's why I voted for the budget initially. Um, so I know when Mr. Magley got up here and said that we were upset by that, I'm not sure which Democrats he was referring to, but I wanna publicly state that I was absolutely not upset by that, because you guys did the right thing for this town, and I appreciate it. Unfortunately, I think what we're doing now is not the right thing for the town, and I know it's a difference of opinion. And, and I am going to vote against it, because I think for four hundred people, that's less than five percent of the electorate to cause us to eliminate two positions. And again, the positions aren't eliminated, the people who are filling them are eliminated, and, and I don't see how, um, it makes the town better, so. That's it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna have to agree with Rachel, I'm, I can't vote for this. The voters said that they wanted an increase from Board of Ed, they said the budget was too low. We gotta do something, otherwise I don't think we're listening to the voters.
And they said the town budget was too high, so we.
Right, true, so. I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't take some from the town. I, I've just had a different idea of what perhaps we should be taking from the town and not a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
What would we take from the town?
Last time, I suggested one position. And then it would still be a net decrease to the budget.
All right. Listen. Yes, sir.
I wasn't gonna speak, however.